Good evening, I'd like to call the Thursday, September eighth, two thousand twenty-two Douglas Plan Board meeting to order. Time is seven oh five. First item on the agenda, citizens' forum. Anyone in the audience here for anything other than what's on the agenda? Seeing as none. Item number two, A and Rs. There is an A and R in a packet for one fifty-seven Wallen Lake Road. Is there anyone here to discuss that?
Engineer from the floor, engineer.
This is Peter Engel from the floor, engineer.
Right here? Yeah, please let us know what's going on with the site here and what's being proposed.
Sure, so just a proposed A and R. Breaking off the new lot for additional single-family home there. They have that frontage for two lots, more than enough area. So, just pretty much breaking the existing house off on a rectangular lot and creating another.
Alright.
Interesting, it's what, three point four five feet, those two? Mr. Engineer?
Just for nine, any comments?
No, it conforms with our regulation. It was a little difficult to read at first because there's two segments as part of the frontage, one hundred ninety-seven point six six, and then a small segment at three point four five to get them to that two hundred foot total. I did verify that by looking at the deed language just in case, and it does check out. So, the frontage is there, the lot size is there, and Wallen Lake Road, as we all know, is a passable way, so I didn't have any issues with the A and R.
The doable comment is more for the engineer to inform the applicant that it's possible that this area, given some of the white lines and stuff, is located inside the National Heritage Dangerous Space Protection Area. Just for them to make sure that they do their due diligence when they're getting ready to apply for permits or construction. Is there any sort of clearing?
Can you throw this?
Cell chair.
Whichever chair. Chair.
For now.
What is the three point four five? What is this strange? It's just like triangular thing that's almost pen-shaped that goes down. I see the curves, the dotted curves, which I understand is a balanced corner, but what is that three point four five? What is that just? Mr. Engineer? Peter?
Was that that little section along the frontage?
Yeah, yeah, why does that go down at a little pencil-like left? What does that mean?
It's kind of an odd little area, it's just part of the boundary of the right of way. The original, the original property had that little. Dagging up.
So, are you suggesting that part of that area is within that pencil-like shape?
Yeah, it says behind seven point six six plus three point four five.
Right, the three point four five, I'm just curious.
To two hundred.
No, I understand how that adds up, but I don't, whatever, never seen something like that. Only in Douglas.
Yeah, how are they pulling that frontage? Is I asked the question.
Right. Just want to be right, don't want it to go to the registry and get kicked back or anything.
Yeah, I don't understand how it applies, just the record date and the record plans have a little three point four foot section of frontage right there.
But, you're the engineer, so you're attesting to this that this will never be, I mean, anything can be challenged, but never be overturned because of some adjacent landowner, it's a common old mask, which is probably not going to be a problem. But I just want to make sure, you know? We're all for the applicants.
Yeah, that's what's making the law.
Yeah, I surveyed, did, you know, a full boundary survey on it and did all the research. So, he's certifying that that's the legal frontage.
It's just weird. Okay. Whatever.
So, does the deed list four hundred feet of frontage? Because we don't have a copy of the deed.
I verified it when I got the application, just what you said.
It did say four, yeah.
It reads it as three ninety-seven point six six, with that little, that little piece, but it's contiguous. Checks on today.
Oh, we need, so it's not four hundred.
It is, they're contiguous, it's just another measurement.
Yeah. Okay.
For whatever reason.
Difficult, sorry, make sure.
There was something there at some point, the past. But it is contiguous.
It's like a, like a signature, this little, you know? Alright, I'm okay with it, as long as the answer is, as long as the answer is okay, I'm okay, I guess.
We need a motion then for endorse?
Yes.
Make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for one fifty-seven, one fifty-seven Wallen Lake Road.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Wicker, seconded by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
A and R is all set.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter, A and Rs all set. It'll be, it'll be available for pickup tomorrow between eight thirty and twelve.
Thanks.
Next, A and R, public hearings, non-additional business at MS four compliance, the schedule.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We had this on our agenda last, last meeting and we're all fully represented here with all our members, so I kind of put this back in front of us, it might be a little competitive, but we have obviously our requirements to comply with MS four as more geared towards cities as it is versus town, so we obviously understand that some of these requests can be a little bit difficult for us. Nevertheless, we do need to set a schedule as part of an annual report to report some sort of progress, notification of stormwater and green space, et cetera. So, what we're looking for this evening is not for us to make recommendations for town meeting or anything, we're looking to put a schedule into our annual report, something to the effect of when we could expect our subdivisions to be tuned, our subdivision regulations to be tuned up, our zoning regulations, and then a general bylaw for stormwater management and stormwater program. Now, as Mr. Wicker pointed out in the previous meeting, and I didn't know this, if this has been a town meeting before, then it did not go well. And I verified that with the town administrator, and he said, look, don't push this at all town meeting, this needs far more research than you know. I'll take your word for it. So, what we're looking for now, and this is a recommendation between our consultant and I, is to set the schedule. Now, he recommended something to the effect of maybe you're looking to have incorporated some of the subdivision changes, which is something we can do in houses without going to town meeting, by say, June or December of two thousand twenty-three. Maybe some zoning updates by December of twenty-four, and maybe go back to that general bylaw by two thousand twenty-five. So, schedule it out as far as you can, because once you give them the schedule, they're all.
Right.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I would do like a one, three, five year.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the easiest ones would be the infiltration, no good for rain gardens.
If I can through the chair, any changes we do, I know you were saying not to tell a meeting, I think the town should have a say in anything that's done to us.
Even subdivision. Through the chair, we would hold the public here. Go around the discussion.
Okay. Yeah, as long as it's public moment, because it's going to affect everybody in the town of Dallas.
Yeah, I think the least amount we can do to have us in compliance, that's what we should do. And I think that's been what the discussion that we've had every single time.
Correct.
That this is popped up.
Yep.
So, maybe two, four, six. And I would start with probably subdivision, then zoning, then the stormwater.
But subdivision by twenty-three or twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Okay, and then zoning by twenty-six, general by twenty-eight.
We see yourself.
You know, might have something together, but that doesn't mean it's going to pass.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I mean, yes, we might have a small packet together, but in reality, like last time, that was very ugly. That went down and we all knew it was going to happen. There were kind of pushed too much too fast. So, and the townspeople spoke very loud and very clear.
If I may, the chair, if, when the time comes that we present next year, I think we ought to make it public that there's going to be follow-up in the year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty, just to let the town meeting know what's coming up next, so they're, you know, they feel that, you know, we're honoring them in a way, doing it, you know, methodically, that's all.
Okay, great, thank you.
The annual report, Madam Chair, is due at the end of this month, April twenty-seventh. I'm going to propose a schedule back to the consultant, and if for some reason he thinks the timeline doesn't work, we still have another meeting which we can make an adjustment.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, concept plan, Lake Shore Drive.
Madam Chair, we have some folks in the audience. If you'd like, I can set the table on for a little bit.
Sure.
With us is Lee Janice Cahill, they're property owners over here on Lake Shore Drive, and they presented me with a concept A and R package. This isn't a formal filing yet, so they had some questions, just wanted to know the plan, try to check it out. So, the frontage is there, lot size is there, but, you know, I don't, I didn't know the road, I've never been down it before. And so I reached out to the other town departments and just seeing the packet, some of the comments that they came back with, so I relayed those back to the folks who are here today. And then we had another separate meeting together, and we're trying to come up with some way to address some of the concerns made by the fire department and the E W about grade and accessibility and such. So, the point, the reason we're here today is because I don't want to keep the board in the dark about this, you know? We're working behind the scenes with, you know, fire and emergency services, but the board needs to be kept up to speed even if it's not a formal filing, so.
Yeah, let's just keep it brief because it isn't a formal filing, and also, this is, the board has seen this road, and we have made requirements for upgrades in order to have this subdivided, so I think the applicant is very aware of what this board, because pretty much every single person is the same as the last time, that we are, you're well aware of what we would require for improvements before endorsement.
Madam Chair, if I could further continue. And that's the difference of, as you know, between A and R and subdivision, if it's an A and R, we can't condition anything. It's, we don't have the ability to do that. So, if it's a subdivision, you can, but as we know, this is a private road that already exists. So, how do you apply for definitive subdivision with like fifty waiver requests? So, this seems to me to fall right in between there somewhere, and I was hoping that collectively we can figure that out.
Suitable with grade construction, and we don't need to endorse it if it doesn't have it. So, that's, I mean, I think it's short and sweet, that's the end of the point. We, if we're able, if it meets the requirements of A and R, then we can endorse it. If not, then the applicant needs to improve the roadway, just as in the past. So.
I mean, it was all the letters from two thousand seventeen, the fire department, police department, the highway department, we're all, we did everything they wanted us to do.
There was.
And name and addresses for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
Name and addresses for the record.
Janice Cahill, help us meet.
David Cahill, I'm with us, man. Yeah, so Kelly and I have been working on the issues, and there's only kind of tool that I can take care of, so I mean, as far as, there's one area that's more than ten percent grade, and I talked to Jeff, the engineer from Drive, handle, we can take care of that issue. Widen it a hundred twenty feet by fifteen feet, cut it down till I get eight percent. Plus, he'll give us another three spots for fire trucks that pull off. We have a spot for four fire trucks, just two hundred feet from that too. Anyway, that's the next meeting, I guess.
We just wanted to figure out which, what we apply for.
The other issue, you know, Mr. Ferno thought, you know, if I die tomorrow, since I own the road, take care of what's going to happen. So, we're working out my attorney. He's going to take care of that issue, because that's a major issue. You know, because the town doesn't want to be taken around. You know, if there's a real problem, something happens to me, you know?
So, there would probably be a response to a party inheriting the task.
Yeah, we're going to set association.
That's what I was going to ask, if I may.
Yes.
The highway department of town does not maintain the road. We plow it and sand it, but that's if the maintenance is not our responsibility. I think some of the questions that John might have had, you own, you own the road?
I have to set a deed, I own the road.
Okay, and you're keeping that deed separate from, you're not, you're not selling the lots to the center of the road or anything like that, so that the homeowners own it, or?
Well, there's going to be, there's going to be association where they are going to own to the center of the road.
So, they will own the road?
That's what's happening as we speak. So, we just have a, I own the whole road, so there's only like three landowners that I have to talk to.
Right, and once you sell those lots?
Correct.
You won't own the road anymore, the people that buy lots will own to the center of the road.
They're going to set a little, so it's like Ledgestone Road, you guys never had a problem with that, fifty years, really?
I don't have a problem with that, but it's, is, is the highway department's phone going to ring off the wall because there's a washout or there's drainage problems or there's, there is no drainage? That's, that's what has to be satisfied.
Through the chair, if I, okay, okay, through the chair, if I may ask, just sort of a synopsis, you own the road right now, we get that part, and how many, would you sell the lots? How many potential homeowners, how many blocks will there be when everything is sold, including yours?
Well, the school park, I think total that's living down there, I think the twelve.
So, you have, there'll be twelve residents down there at some point? That's plenty for an association in the center of the road, I mean, that's, that's got some mighty, something behind it, so. But, but you would do that upon, what's the mechanism, so that we're hearing this, we'd like that, I think.
It's a legal issue to set up with the deeds and everything.
Well, you have to, it's like that.
So, the others, I've talked to a couple of them down there, and they don't have an issue with the site of lot. So, everything I sell now, their property will go to the center of the road, and there'll be an association, so if there's a problem with the road, the association will handle the problem.
But if I, excuse me, again, through the chair, if I may ask that, the other lots that are sold currently, and are previously been sold, how many of those are in control by other parties?
One, two, three, three on that side.
So, just asking, would there not be any sale, will you just grant that to them as part of this in their acceptance of a future association?
Yes.
I mean, we want it to happen, I think everybody's benefiting, right?
Yeah, it's going to happen. This is my, my attorney's done several, there were six scenarios, but the association is the most efficient one, because if the guy who went out on the road is going to problem, the other guy is going to say, well, we don't drive down, we don't drive down.
It's everybody's fault.
It's everybody's problem. So, if they all forward fifty bucks a year for a load of crushed bankware.
I agree.
You know, I put that stuff down five years ago, we haven't brought it, because it's like concrete.
They can sell.
All right. So, did you have a question?
I just got one, and it's going to be almost like where I grew up, with a private street in the city. And we wanted to fix the potholes in the road, everybody on the street throwing a little kitty to fix the pothole, because the city won't do it. Now, they'll plow it, sand it, and that kind of thing, but as far as the maintenance of the paved road, that was up to you. That, this will be more enforceable though, as far as being an association? Now, let's see, you get somebody down there that refuses to contribute. Is there any legal trigger mechanisms, to see where I'm going? Right now, everything sounds good.
So, it's going to be having to sign off for each landowner, each property owner?
Right, but you can't get blood out of the stone, you know, so it says.
She's been down in Ledgestone for fifty years, and that's the same thing. What he's saying is, somebody doesn't want to put the money in the cave.
So, you get two, three, four people that say, we don't want to do it, we ain't, I don't have the money.
The lots that will be built on, that's going to be in the, in the deed.
I, I agree, but just because it's in a deed, doesn't mean you're going to get the money out of my wallet, through the chair.
Right, well, it's the same exact thing as residential compounds.
There's a required association form that they can legally handle that, it's nothing to do with us.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the road is protected, like you said. So, the road is maintained, where in ten years, somebody goes, hey, half the people on the street don't want to fix it no more.
Right.
And then now the town is stuck with having to fix the road for the rescue vehicles and things.
Right, it's more protecting the town and notifying everyone that's on that road when they purchase it, the briar re-creare. Same as Isabella, that never was finished.
A legal document has been signed.
And it should be embedded in the deed as well.
Exactly.
I mean, I mean, it's just, Ledgestone.
Yep.
They built up so much money because they want to, they paved the whole thing.
Right.
They paved the whole thing, the whole road, just part of the park. Just heavy hitters, people that are interested in lots, you know?
No, I, I told them, through the chair.
Yeah, let's get specifically back to what we're here to, to address, if anything.
So, what do we apply for an A and R?
It's up to the applicant to decide, we can't, we can't say anything about recommending an application.
So, if we apply for an A and R, just?
And if we don't choose to endorse it because of whatever reasons, then you could go the other route.
My engineers kind of work with you on that.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we're not going to have any recommendations tonight.
What kind of, in the right direction from that?
Yeah, I think pretty much everyone, there's a couple of these people, but to say anything.
I didn't have a chance to look over all this. I know there's a lot of commentary from the fire department here. This is just a two thousand fifteen edition that you handed, I don't know if there's been any updates to the code since then, if you have those.
Kelly and myself have worked aside and side on that, and there's only two issues, one of them is a fourteen percent slope in one area. Cut that down, and widen the road like a hundred thirty feet, so it's a nice, plus you can pop up three fire trucks there.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you have the, whatever up-to-date codes there were.
She's happy with everything so far.
Okay.
Please, everybody has to kind of go with the five.
I just had two questions, so are there, will, will this require you to put in a turnaround? A formal turnaround, I know that there's an informal one now.
Well, there's two.
At the bottom, right?
Halfway down, there's a turnaround.
You have two easement turnarounds. One's fifty by eighty, which would have, you'd dig it out like five trucks pop there, and one's down at the end at Barmer Ranch. It's an easement that they can turn around, I had to dig it all out, what if I sold the house?
And there's only one spot that is more than a ten percent grade there?
Yeah.
On the whole road?
Yeah, I spent a fourth round, engineer, show you.
Me too.
I know what you're saying, just, you know, get out of hand, but anyway, they all came up with the same thing, three engineers, just one spot. You know, it goes like this, so I'm going to go put another road aside of it, so it'll be like forty feet wide of the road. So, you could have like five trucks.
Obviously, I've been following insanely that road for forty-three years.
It's a lot better than it was.
The improvements have been amazing, and.
And I just widened.
Except for that one turn, it's, it's a much easier road to navigate than it ever was before.
That first one, I actually just made it six feet wide, and I just had an excavator down there. The drainage was incredible. I put a catchbait, a bit of pulvering on one side. I went down there this afternoon, just checking from all the rain, and just, nothing at all moved, you know? So, appreciate the time.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it, and there's other meetings this month.
It's too easy.
Chapter fifty-three E transfers to general fund?
Madam Chair, we had this on our agenda last meeting too, we're going to see these on our agenda quite regularly moving forward, until, so the chapter fifty-three accounts were set up because we had a town engineer, and funds for applications were sent into this account to complete reviews and whether he needed extra help for mother and whatnot. So, what ended up happening is over time, all these applications created this fifty-three and a half, fifty-three accounts, but the money is just sitting there, and it's not to be given back to applicants or anything like that, it needs to be transferred into our general application fund, just to get those extra lines off the books we don't use chapter fifty-three anymore. So, working with the town accountant, our principal clerk, Jen Kuchar, and we're able to do it, are going through these kind of line by line, and there's some in your folder here for signature. It's just the town finance director requires a vote from the board of selectmen to transfer these fifty-threes to the general fund.
Okay, so it's general, you said general application fund, but it's really just the general fund of the town?
That's correct.
So, none of these subdivisions require any additional consulting?
They do not.
Okay, alright, two thousand twenty-two fall, town meeting warrant articles, you guys do that?
Madam Chair, we just gave a motion on that, on the privacy first.
Do we have a choice?
You can wait if you'd like, but it'll be on your next agenda.
So, Deer Crossing is the first one, right? So, they're still active, that definitive plan, so why aren't we using those funds for that subdivision?
Like as for a bond or a fifty-three G peer review account?
Yeah.
So, there's already a fund established for both of those.
How come that money didn't move over to, because I think there was, the money was refunded many times to applicants if it wasn't used. So, how are we able to transfer this directly instead of putting it back to the applicant?
Madam Chair, if you wish to speak with the finance director and hold this on to the next meeting, that's fine, I'm just going with the right information.
Okay, I mean, do we recall when we used the applicant, we'd get the money back from the fifty-three G?
Is that the deer crossing when you're talking about now?
Oh, I mean, fifty-three E, or G, was it G?
They would only get it back from the G.
Yes, deer crossing, I talked about.
Well, there's, one on the top is Deer Crossing, that's still an active subdivision. And they paid in the money for consultants?
Not outside consultants, E is, and I don't quite understand the E, because for some reason, we're putting funds in for our town engineer to review, and they would conduct the review, and the funds would sit in that account, but it's just an arcade way of doing it that we were still doing for years, up until like the last three years. So, we're trying to dissolve those accounts and put the funds somewhere we're going to use.
I can think what might have happened when it passes, we've rolled a vote because it's an unfinished subdivision that's still being rebuilt, and it's being done in phases. Kind of knew was it, instead of giving the money back, we could put it back into another account, project going as it was being developed?
Yeah, like Saint Dennis Cemetery, that didn't move forward, so why isn't the applicant receiving the funds back as a refund?
Madam Chair, was it recommended by the finance director?
Okay, if we, I don't recall what fifty-three E specifically says, but the Gs definitely went back as refunds.
Yeah, the best we should have.
And Gopo or Court is fifty-three E, that still has money in it?
They also have a bond at the end of fifty-three G.
Yeah.
So, why, why is the town taking the money and not giving it back to the people that are still working there?
Well, they have to request it.
The way I am, the way I understand this is that it's just not how that works under a fifty-three E. Doctor, pretend I'm an accountant.
Yeah.
It's an integrated system.
If I may, through the chair? I, I think last meeting though, we did pass them through. But, I think now, I'd like to know, have a full-blown explanation on why. How and why?
I mean, I think Saint Dennis Cemetery, when they were trying to expand that, that was like last year.
The gravel.
Yeah. So, they paid it an admin fee or a review fee of five hundred dollars, and it didn't go anywhere? And then they paid it outside consultant, I think?
I'd like to have a full, if I may, through the chair?
Yeah.
A real good explanation of what's going on, yeah, before we go any further. I know we did it the last meeting, but now, if we're going to be doing this and there's going to be more, okay. And maybe we should have done it at last meeting, and we did it, that's, we've been there, but now it's time to, okay, let's find out what's going on. Please.
Offset by estimated receipts of user fees. It's supposed to be, you're supposed to have receipts for the hours that are used, and this money's supposed to offset the receipts. Okay, so we'll hold in if we can get a very clear explanation.
Well, we don't per se have a town engineer in the poll, so. Well, we don't per se have a town engineer in the poll, so the system was different than it is now.
But if I can through the chair, the thing is you're paying in while an engineer's here. All of a sudden, no engineer, then you keep the guy's money. It's like, that, right? I'm sorry.
They can ask for it back, that's all. We just have to figure.
What do they know to ask back?
My general understanding of this is they didn't do fifty-three G for some projects if they were using an in-house engineer. And those funds went into this account. Oh, why it worked that way. Never did that in any of the other two towns I've worked in. So, it's, it's bizarre.
Through the chair, how does the independent engineer, since we no longer have one getting paid, how, through what mechanism do they?
We ask for a check and it goes directly to them.
So, wouldn't then that, whatever they are reviewing get offset by money's paid in to these types of funds?
Yeah, it should, but you need a receipt and you need to say that the town engineer spent twenty-nine hun- hundred dollars working on this project. And if he didn't, then they need to get their money back.
Right, right, but there's got to be an accounting somewhere of how, say he works twenty hours, he's having to get paid.
Right.
So, he's submitting something to get paid for his money back.
Correct, the receipt, yes.
Right, so that should filter down to whatever project.
Correct, but we don't have any receipts of the engineer.
It should be a trail somewhere. Yeah, he should get paid unless he documents his hours and what he's worked on. Right, yeah, yeah, it's, he always has. He's always been that way, but it's, it's a different system now, so.
Then, if I came through the chair, the reason I was all left there, we weren't sure what was gonna end up here. Another engineer, or Matt's here, or we are temporary. Nobody knew, so everything was left alone. And that's why I think it's been dormant for so long and it's just coming back up.
Yeah, it's saying, based upon adequate documented material supporting such estimated amounts. And then the receipt so allocated shall be deposited in a special account. And then may be expended for the purpose allocated without further appropriation. Any balance in such accounts at the end of the year shall be deposited into the general treasury of the city or town. And then there's deficiency. Sure. Itemized in a schedule. There has to be some sort of receipt. Okay, all right, let's, um, hold over till we find out the answer on that. I just, I don't think, unless you had to have receipts, that the money had been spent. I don't see how we keep their, their money, especially the projects are still ongoing. Almost all of these. Twenty twenty-two fall town meeting warrant, did you guys review these?
Wonderful, yeah, hi.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, first one, I'll just, solar. So, at the last meeting, I showed that we incorporated the changes that we made at the public hearing leading up to last town meeting. Those are in here, and the change under six point eight point two point one, you'll see a strike through the line, goes to eliminate. Under section six point eight point nine, dimensional table. The changes to the front edge, the side setback, rear setback.
Mm-hmm.
On page, second to last page, six point eight point eleven point two was the large-scale clearing of a part of the area in excess of five acres. We had a discussion last meeting about possibly setting a cap. I have highly recommended that, having a cap from the beginning. Mr. Wicker asked me to find out the size of the arrays in town currently, and those, the largest is sixty acres. The next is forty-one acres, another's thirty, another's twenty. We have to set a cap, of course. It's just my recommendation. Curious if the board wishes to do so. I'd like to make that amendment before we send this off to the board's selection.
My opinion would be no, no cap. I mean, I don't know how big they can get, but I don't know. I think we vetted this, this bylaw pretty good the last time we saw it. So, on my, I was, my opinion is no cap. Board, anyone else?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, this is what we had recommended the last, for spring cap, you know? These changes.
The sixty, that's why I wanted to know how big our solar projects are. And I agree ninety-nine percent with the no cap. I've always said the no cap. But what if you had somebody come in here with six hundred acres?
I don't think that we can actually regulate it. I don't think we can enforce that.
That's what I'd like to know. I'd like to know a little bit more depth with the way now that solar and the energy, everything's been voted on and changing. It's also is changing every day through the chair. I mean, we, we might be able to write it, but is it worth the ink that's being written on the paper? Is what I have an issue with. Yeah, we could write, I would say enough a hundred acres, and they just go to the next, all of the states, they come back, says you can't do that. They can do whatever they want. Then why do we have it? Can we find that out before we even think about putting any ink on paper?
It's, it's been done in other communities.
Huh?
It's been done in other communities.
I don't care what other communities do. I'm worried about here and what the regs and the state and things that are going on now. If it's changing every day and the state says, no, you can't stop somebody from putting more in, then guess what? We can't stop it. Are you gonna have, spend a thousand dollars in legal fights over something you know you're gonna lose? And that's the only question that I have.
Through the chair, Matt, have, if this is going on in other towns that there are caps, how are they enforcing those caps? Has it ever come to a legal decision in terms, I know you said that, I think, I think there's firm governance on it, but.
There's a lot of exemptions for solar under four A section three, and solar bylaws are challenged every day for different reasons. Uh, most notably one recently from the town of Walltham. Uh, which says that towns, uh, under that Dover amendment, what you can regulate is your, your public safety, your, your welfare. So, it's up to the board. I've always been under the belief that habitat displacement is real. And clearing hundred, two hundred acres at a time creates asset environmental issues, not only for stormwater, but for habitat as well. I might be the only conservation-minded person here, and I apologize, but um, it's just my recommendation, and if the board wishes not to do so, that's my turn.
I don't think it, I don't think it's about conservation. I think it's about the legalities and enforcement and regulating that specific section. It's, that's, conservation is a whole different thing and for another day.
Look, through the chair, I mean, I mean, I love what we have here in town. We probably have more acreage of, you know, with the, um, DCR, of guaranteed protected forests and everything else than probably, I don't know. I, I shouldn't say I know, but I don't, but we have a lot of land that will be protected and we don't, unlike cities like, you know, Walltham and Needham and Newton. They're very concerned. I mean, actually, Natick, I mean, Natick has some, but not like what we have here. We, so we're land-rich here. This is the, you know, the tax base is not what we should be concerned about, of course, the environment is a concern, but we do have, um, you know, land-rich. And we're not blessed with sewer systems that project a lot of, uh, commercial development. So, we are talking about solar, we are talking about marijuana grow, we are talking about sales, different things that generate revenue. So, I don't think we should probably have a cap in our regard, because I think we're fairly protected, Matt, I agree with you, for most towns or cities. But I think in our case, we have the privilege of living in a very green, naturally green community, not bay green, but naturally green, so that's.
And if I can through the chair, if somebody came in, I bought three hundred acres and they were gonna mow it down to put in a farm to hay it, no one's gonna say boo.
Right.
So, I mean, well, it's good for one, but not the other. You see where I'm going? It's one of those deals, so you wanna expand an, an apple orchard, and I just bought four hundred acres. So, let's go plow it down.
Right, right.
And so, I mean, granted, you're putting solar panels. The thing is, they make no noise. They don't create, you know, the kids aren't going to school, and the whole nine yards on that aspect of it. And the land is still there, and like Oak Street, these are raised panels. So, things can still live underneath them, I think, who knows?
I'm a landowner, and I have land rights, I know too. And if I wanna take my additional twenty-eight acres of woods, whatever, and do what I can legally, in all respect to conservation, I should be able to do that.
And I, and I, through the chair, I concur.
Okay, so the other option, the other, um, section is the six point eight point eleven point three? We had the letter.
Yes, I also reached out to, uh, I, you're at Massaw, which has kind of been following all of the different case laws here. It's been a really good resource for multiple communities. Asked a question kind of regarding this today. I think, I think striking it might be a little harsh, but I, I think we can modify this to kind of make both parts happy. Uh, and the resident is not incorrect when they say that the biomap for critical natural landscape or habitat is not something you could restrict. You can't restrict the use because of that one. That's this map right here. It's advisory. It's not strict like the polygons for endangered species. But they show a lot of areas in town. See everything green here, according to where this is written, you can't put a solar thing.
Right.
All right, but the only things that are actual endangered habitat are much smaller area than what you're seeing here. So, I think how I'd like this to read instead, if I'm, kinda wanna follow along with your area, kinda have it edited ready. Is that commercially scaled solar energy systems shall not be located in firmly protected open space, which already know. Within, or within endangered habitat areas. Now, endangered are very specific only ones. It's not the bio. All right, and they put a period there. Oh, so, excuse me, endangered areas mapped by the NHESP. Okay, period. Second sentence could read, systems shall be designed to minimize impacts. So, this way, we're not using the biomap to restrict them. So, if it read, as I said, and then you put a period after NHESP, then you read that anything else is asking them to minimize the impact of those areas to the maximum extent possible, but not prohibited. So, I think it cleans it up, helps the applicants, or, or the, uh, answers the questions.
So, you're saying it's a verbal encouragement to.
Yes, so it gives the board discretion, instead of saying you just can't do it.
Does natural heritage permit commercially scaled solar?
Thank you.
In the habitat, estimated or priority habitat?
So, it's another.
So, I mean, it's already regulated, so why do we need to say, we're, we're not the governing body. It's natural heritage for those, um, habitats.
Sure.
And then.
Conservation.
Firmly protected open space.
We already know.
It's already restricted, so it's.
Yeah, but, uh.
All right.
Yeah, I would say strike it so that it's not as confusing, cause I didn't, I didn't recall that natural heritage allowed that.
And then, and then the lands at forty-one, what's the one that you put your land in on fifty-one?
Sixty-one?
Sixty-one A, right. I mean, that's already protected unless they come back and pay all the taxes.
Or opens, yeah, open spaces.
That's what I'm going with. Right, but they'll do it if it's worth doing.
I see what you're saying, but so even if we strike it, those things are still, I'm still.
Yeah, that's okay.
Even if we strike it, those things are still restricted anyway. And anything that's self-habitat or statewide importance on the D U P is likely gonna be regulated to conservation.
Yes.
So, we could strike it entirely.
Yeah.
And you know, and even speaking with I, you're, she, she.
I don't have a problem with leaving it in India, just so it's made very clear how we feel about it. But, I mean, you're right, it's already detected. It's easily in anybody else. I mean, we were told that those that sat in on the hearing for the, the last little, there's, there's not much we can do to stop it.
Right.
It's, it's, whatever that, I forget the particular chapter that it's.
It's the Dover. Dover.
Yeah, four A, it's all right. There's not much we can do. Solar farm wants to come in, we, we don't have a, I'd like to stand on our reason to say, no, we don't want it yet. It's gonna come in no matter what.
Right.
So, I, I, if you wanna strike it, that's fine, but I, I don't have a problem with leaving it in India, so we, people know how we feel about it.
I, following this discussion, Chair, and with, uh, my contact in Massaw, I'm pleading towards striking it in part of it. I, I think it, it's cleaner that way. And there's other, uh, there's other ways to regulate it, to conservation. Yeah, it, it, maybe it's perhaps it's not something, I mean, we might want an applicant just to let us know if they're located in these areas, and then we can proceed us forward, but you don't need a reduction whatsoever. So, I'm okay with striking it now. I changed my opinion.
And that's why we're.
He's coming around.
That's why we discussed about it. I mean, that's the whole idea about.
That's why we're here.
Having the board here.
Right. Throw. The A J's gonna look at it anyway if he doesn't like you to pick it back to us.
Yeah. So, uh, would the board be interested in a motion to send this to the selectmen for fall town meeting consideration with the changes we discussed?
Sure, so moved.
Most of the day, Mr. Wickers, I can buy Mr. Solcrath. Call us a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've gotta scoop, so I'm gonna pass it over to Jake.
Uh, the building, like, that's pretty good, yeah?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, good. Good night, Tracy.
So, Jake, can I just, just because I don't, I'm not understanding that solar piece on the, um, size restrictions? If we don't have jurisdiction over the size, then why are we proposing sending it for a meeting warrant?
I'm sorry, I just.
Okay. No, it's fine.
Little lighted one out, I wanna make sure we're still in the air.
Oh, did you get that?
No, I didn't.
That's okay, no. Um, so I just wanna be clear, on these parts of this fall town meeting warrant, the articles for consideration, if we don't have jurisdiction over these bylaws to begin with, then why are we presenting them to be voted on?
Question, uh, through the chair, um, statute, uh, forty-eight, section five says that the way that it has to go is, any of those only by law. Has to go to the selectmen from a sponsor, doesn't have to be us, but since I'm the one working on it, I need a board to send it to them. It can't be me, it has to be a board. And from there, the selectmen then send it back to us to hold a public hearing. It has to be planned for that holds that public hearing, whether or not we have jurisdiction or not. So, this is, it's a process to get these things accepted. It's a strict regimen of things we have to follow. I could send this to the select board to try to sponsor it first, and then the only time we would see it is at the public hearing. So, I find it beneficial to bring it to the board so we can at least review these things first and be prepared to answer any questions that come from the public at the public hearing.
Which we sponsor.
Yes, right.
So, we're not blindsided, right? How do the reasons do it? Because it becomes hot of sight, plant review, otherwise we wouldn't have it. Perfect to say at all about it, so with a bylaw being site led, they do have to come into us. And we can suggest things to them so that maybe they'll see things our way rather than their way sometimes. But without a bylaw, if you don't have a bylaw, anything, you can do almost anything. If you have a bylaw, then you can kind of try to protect yourself.
Sure, so really, our only vote is whether to put it to.
To the select.
That's right, well, that, that is base.
Cause I'm not sure I'm on board with the no cap, but that's okay. We're not voting really on that anyway.
Did you vote to oppose on that motion?
I didn't, I didn't respond, so. But if I, if I say no in the minority anyway.
I'm excited to say something. Um, that's one of the things that I'd like us to try to, or is to not only call for the motion to, but also, yeah, your name, gotta ask for the name.
We should be writing that down. That's part of the record. Did you name it?
I named it, yes.
That's cool. Through the chair, that way there, as you know, then it's in the minutes.
Right, I'm not opposed to having solar at all.
Well, no.
It just, I, I just don't know that it should be an unlimited amount. It's just my. But, but if we don't have the ability to even.
Well, we do.
Govern it anyway. No, I mean, to, if they're gonna come back and say, well, the state says that we can do six hundred acres. So, even if we have something that says our cap is four hundred, and they come back and say six hundred.
Curious to hear from maybe the town attorney, just like, is it, can we legally put a cap on it or not?
Good question. Uh, we did have a cap on the draft that you reviewed, and you did not, and make a strength.
But through the chair, we've been through half a dozen of these, four of these solar projects. But through the chair, we've been through half a dozen of these, four of these solar projects. And it got into, you know, roadway access and get into the buffers to the neighbors, there's a lot of like, through the site plan review that we have purview on.
Right.
So it isn't though, just because we say there's no cap, that they can do whatever. We still have pretty much all the say on how it gets designed. So, and that's kind of cool to have that authority and.
Right.
Responsibility for the public and the neighbors and the abutters, and that's why we're here, so that's, yeah, that's good. I don't remember any discussion through the chair, any discussion, if we had both caps in the past. We haven't added anything like what Joseph was saying, six hundred acres.
Right, I just threw it out there.
Through the chair, it's never going to happen, but.
Good.
That's good.
Right?
Yeah, it's on the old.
Just for curiosity, if I don't, if this, I don't know what the state is allowing, or taking a river cap, but I don't think.
They failed on the.
Yeah. If you're going to get a bylaw in progress, so it's, things have to change.
Elon Musk is going to buy some of that land.
Put a cap on anything.
If I can, through the chair.
Elon Musk is going to buy some of that land.
If that context being made, that you brought up about the Dover, is that involved at all? The Dover, I thought I was told in this room one time, was involved with solar.
Yeah, it is.
So that's why I'd like to have clarification on the Dover. On this issue, to reiterate what is being said on the aspect of what you can and can't. That's a big, Dover overrules everything.
Yeah, so the recent Supreme District, S J C decision between the town wall fan and the developer was that regulations for solar facilities need to be based on clearly defined public health, safety, or welfare considerations. That's all that case did, so what, what happened there was, the town created a zoning ordinance and overlay area for solar and they pigeonholed. So the solar can only exist in like two percent of the town, so that got challenged. And they found that to be unconstitutional, to allow for that sort of development, and the town lost. So, but ultimately what came from it is what I just read to you, that, that's the only way you can regulate these things. And Dover is that forty-eight three exceptions like you get for institutional, schools, when you.
Churches and stuff, they, they can do.
And they wrap solar right into that, and each of these decisions just further proves.
Or the points, points of order on that?
Public health, safety, or welfare considerations. Now, welfare is kind of broad.
Yeah, what, what do they define welfare as?
Right.
They're cutting a forest where there's natural habitat, is that welfare?
Right, that was the sentence that came from the termination I read myself, and I could just copy that also. So, yeah, welfare is still kind of up for debate. So these things just keep rolling on through court cases and there'll be further challenges as they continue, so. We just, what we're working with is the state template, right, for the most part, of a bylaw that's been reworked through multiple communities and accepted through a lot of communities. And, and the two that I worked for, they have been challenged because we've regulated and controlled the project, like Mr. Sokrat pointed out, to the best of our abilities. And that's really the best.
To the best of our abilities. It never should, in my opinion, it never should have been incorporated with Dover if you can.
No.
And I don't see how that happened, I don't know why that happened, but it shouldn't have been incorporated with Dover. And through the chair, there are a lot of communities, municipalities that put their legal system and the cost of the town in peril because of, you know, tightly pigeonholed zoning and such. Everything gets challenged and the town's looking at millions of dollars of legal fees every year. I mean, I don't think we can look at that and say, we, we want to be like chicken and, or challenge stuff, but we don't want to be frivolous and put the town in a position that, you know, it goes broke because of legal things.
And if I came through the chair, with the map that he had and the formal layouts and everything, a lot of the town is protected, but they can't do it. So we're, there's already a big chunks where, no, can't go here, you can't go there, you can't go there. And it's not being controlled by us, it's being controlled by other entities which are further ahead than us. So that kind of backs, would back our decision and said, no, you can't go there because this map says you can't be there.
Right.
And that's, and that's about the best legal way to have it happen.
Right, and through the chair, maybe the potential for a six hundred or a thousand acre solar farm would never come up because there just isn't that amount of acreage that is available to be able to do that, but I don't know that.
If we don't know.
Yeah.
Could we get the town council's interpretation of those three things potentially? Because I'd rather just have the answer now, because if we have this hearing and someone in the audience says, why can't we put a cap on five acres? I'd like to at least, this is why.
Yeah, I, I agree one hundred percent, because it is.
The town could ask that.
It is going to come up.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know, it will come up.
At least have the answer ready.
Sure. It's my opinion through speaking with council previously, that you can put a cap, it's just, I don't know if a cap's ever been challenged and there's no case to this show that it goes one way or the other. So I think towns are kind of thrown down to the board to see what works.
But maybe just finding out.
And that's.
Reference the welfare and general concern of maybe potentially clear cut in large forests, if that's, if he has an interpretation of that.
Okay.
Height, you said height, that definition's good.
Yes, I added, wait, I didn't make it in here. Mr. Sokrat recommended at previous meeting, average finished grade elevation.
That's right, average finished grade.
So I did put that in my draft letter to the select board tomorrow, but that's not what made it into our packet.
So let's do it next time.
Yeah, it does, it does read average finished grade.
Nope.
The way that we want it. So we're looking for a similar recommendation to.
I think we'll do minutes.
Yeah. We're looking for a similar recommendation to forward this to the board of selectmen for fall town meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Wickers. Seconded by Mr. Sokrat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board acceptance.
Okay, so we should have, had Mr. Chairman a letter from grades engineering.
Yes.
So we, the owner of this development, Stonegate Development, his name is, is Mr. Mike Rafferty. I believe it was his father that actually built this neighborhood. All right, and he's been sitting on a bond in our account for a long time and he wants it back. So ultimately, there's, there's two, the loop for cobblestone and old carriage were accepted at town meeting in two thousand and fifteen. The two cul-de-sacs at the end, and I have the plans out here if anyone wants to see them, have not been accepted by town meeting yet. So back in, I think it was March, when we were prepping for spring town meeting, we met out on site with Mr. Rafferty and we engaged with private consultant Jeff Walsh to look at the as-built plan and make sure it was built in accordance with plan. Some things were identified where there was a, you see the old layout, the new layout versus the accepted layout, they needed to be sealed. There were some, some bounds missing, like bounds on this board, there were some missing. And there was a large retention structure needsman in the back that needed some maintenance. And Mr. Rafferty spent the summer correcting those things, hiring the teams to make sure the bounds were installed. And Mr. Walsh and I went out to the property last week. And Mr. Walsh provided this letter with a clean mill valve, so he was able to accomplish all the things that we asked for. There's still a lot of steps in this process, it, it, it isn't on the board right now to deem the project complete. But it's the selectmen that will initiate the process to put this on town meeting. I just feel it might be advantageous for us now to make a record at date that the board of selectmen put this on the warrant. At least recommend favorable action to the board. So the emergency services, the highway department, you were out there with us at one point, and popping manholes and stuff. So, but everything checked out when Jeff and I were out there and, so the project is, is complete and we're ready to release the, finally get the roads out, so they're a great check.
So those two separate roads, or is it one like an extension of like Cobblestone Lane?
Right, right, so Cobblestone Lane is just going to have the same name, all right, but a portion of it was accepted seven years ago. So we're proposing the next portion of it is accepted.
Meeting House Lane, is that separate?
Meeting House also had a portion of it accepted, you'll see it in the draw, it's like fifty feet of it was accepted as part of the other layout. And the rest of it, where the rest of the construction is, is what's remaining. It's just a little bollie cul-de-sac and it's that needs to be accepted.
So we have great.
They're all built out, I'm sorry, Meeting House is all built out. There are remaining lots on Cobblestone Lane that the developer has sold. But the, no one has done anything on those properties. And there's no intent to do that mess, it was inherited from its father. So the board could, in theory, not accept it and want those lots to be built first. But personally, I think that I, I think you can do it. If there's like, like for example, someone carved off an A and R lot on any existing road, you're talking construction anyway, so. I, I think, I think it's more than reasonable to accept these two at town meeting. So a recommendation to selectmen as such would be something the board can consider this evening.
Also moved on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wickers, seconded by Mr. Marks. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any votes?
Any names?
Subdivision regulations.
I, I'm just balling this, working on town meeting stuff. I know we want to get the road with stuff in there, and I wanted to incorporate some of my other changes too, but I've just been getting the town meeting stuff ready. But I, I kind of dropped the ball on this one side.
No worries.
We'll be on your next agenda.
Moving on to ongoing development, any of these.
I do, I have several updates, I'm going to, I might reserve the Am Solar update, but I will make a comment, I guess. As we know, we got a lot of rain this week.
Oh, yeah.
But I did some driving around and checked on some of our sensitive sites in town, and one of those is Shore Road, as we know, we've heard from neighbors over there. Thought is that some of the water that's coming out of those detention ponds at Am Solar are causing issues on Shore Road. Or, that, that is the belief from many of the citizens there. So little history here, we had asked the solar company to engage a consultant, Jeff Walsh again. And he made some recommendations on the other control structures, some modification needs to be made, some grading and, and buildup of, of berms along the detention basin, and a lot of those changes were confirmed to have been done. When do we go, Wednesday, yesterday? So.
They done before the storm?
The changes were done and the storm was Tuesday, right? So I'm thinking it's Wednesday, can't wait to go out there and see what happened, because we just had an amazing storm, so we're going to see something else.
Right.
So both basins, dry.
What?
Now, these are, these aren't retention bases, they're detention, they're intended to send the water out. So we sent seven inches of rain out these basins toward Shore Road or into the areas, the level spreaders and spreading out and stuff. Now, previously in two thousand and twenty-one, the water was pouring over Shore Road. That wasn't the case. Someone had installed a pipe on Shore Road, and as we know, Shore Road, there's some drainage issues, there's issues there, there's nothing to worry about. And we can't say for sure that Am Solar was a cause of those problems, I don't want to make any sort of declaration like that. So, but what I didn't see was water spilling over Shore Road. I was pretty impressed by that.
That's great.
So that was great news, and I just wanted to share that with the board. But don't want to make any declarations yet, there's still, there's still one thing that needs to be done up there is pollination and the seeding needs to take. And NFT's pollution prevention discharge requires that seventy percent of solar fields are covered by pete station. And are they there? It's hard to tell, there's a lot of surface flow and that was a very torrential rain. So there's still surface flow kind of making its way over into these detention bases and kind of washing out their own roads. Progress, taking silk with it, topsoil and whatnot. So they're still in the pollination phase for this and taking sure that all the seeding takes, and that's kind of the last remaining item. But knowing that they made the changes to the public control structures must have slowed the water down. Because it was really flying out there before.
They must have changed, they must have changed that pipe to height.
Yes, there was some height changes they all.
Diameter changes, they were supposed to do.
Exactly, the diameter change at the base of the other control structure was shrunk down.
Yes.
The grates at the top of the other control structure was shrunk down, and I believe a couple of them were raised a couple of feet. So we saw the mortar and all the changes done in the grates and all that, so we were just stood on the field. Just walking around with a bum ankle and solar array and mud, but, yeah, I was, I was very pleased with what I saw. I don't know if it answers the question, but I just wanted to.
That's a great report. I'm glad, yeah, through the chair, the bond that we have.
Ninety, seventy thousand.
Did we, yeah, did we say that was like a three-year bond so we could monitor? They couldn't even ask for it before that?
I believe it's as long as we want it to be. I believe it's as long as we want it to be, as long as the project's active.
Okay, I know we, well, we have put a bond in place that it would be there for years.
Yes.
We still had money to repay us.
That's right, if they, for some reason, did that bond still, that bond still exists, then we.
That's right.
So we have that secured.
So we have enough, through the chair, another bite of the apple with that. I mean, that's a great leverage thing we have.
That's right. So that's my update there anyway. I, I didn't want to fully do that, because we didn't get the report from Jeff Walsh yet, but that's what he told me.
Did Jeff get out there as well?
Yeah, he was with me.
So it'd be good to see his.
Yes.
Formal assessment.
And that's when we can make, you know, circulate that to the residents of Shore Road, so they know that that part of our, our assessment is, is. And I've been keeping them informed as we go, I, I didn't before this meeting, but I, I didn't have that in writing yet, so. But I figured I'd tell you anyway. No, thank you, man, appreciate you. Sure, thanks. Mr. Chair, there's the second item on Oak Street, before I say anything further.
Before.
Oak Street.
Use myself to the chair.
All right. So at the selectmen meeting on Tuesday night, there's, sorry, let me back up. So we had a seating road permit to issue, right, in August. And the next step was to send it back to the board of selectmen for the poll petition. So the poll petition hearing was on Tuesday night, and some of the abutters collectively have proposed an alteration to the polls. And they would like a poll moved to a different location. And I believe that that poll may or may not affect the stone wall. So my question to the board, and this is why I put a copy, this isn't actually the right copy, there's some, it's hiking here. Calls it Northwest Main Street or something. Signed copy doesn't, so anyway. The, I, I, I wanted to ask the board, at the request of the board of selectmen, if they felt that this decision would cover such a modification. Now, we're talking about, we permitted an entire length of an area, okay? One of these poles is at the end of one of those lengths, is that? So that's probably twenty.
I'm out here.
Yeah, that's right, sorry, sorry, that's right. So the idea is to move across the street. Now, we're still talking the same right away. We're still talking trees and stone walls, that's our only jurisdiction on the matter. And I think our conditions might cover something like that, because as you can see in number two there, talks about any disturbance to any of the stone walls along the subject area which are not designated driveway shall be repaired to their original condition, okay? Now, if you're putting in a pole, we have a piece on here, it talks about driveway openings. And I think that this pole would be at the corner of an existing driveway opening.
Is it driveway or is it a found a bowway?
Ah, it's more like a dirt path.
Yeah, okay, so it's not.
But it is an interruption in the stone wall.
Yeah.
All right, on one side, it looks like.
I have no problem.
So if, I think we cover it, but I just wanted to ask the board before I send it back to the selectmen. I don't want to make it my own determination, I felt that should come from the board themselves.
I don't, through the chair, I don't have a problem with, I mean, when you go for a seating road permit anyway, you're going to be, you bust right through the walls for the driveway. And just because this happens to be an open bowway that was used by farmers hundreds of years ago, that doesn't mean it's going to be the driveway for that piece of property if it's developed. So if they knock down a wall, put it back up, but if they put it in the middle of the bowway, you have to support the vice plant, has to shift the driveway over a little bit. That's, I have no problem.
Through the chair, to Mr. Marks, so the question that the selectman Fitzpatrick asked the board was, do they feel that they need to re-advertise a public hearing and modify this?
I, I think number two covers that very.
Through the chair, I say no, it's a minor move.
I would agree.
You're going to have to re-advertise most of the whole process of public hearing to get the one called.
Board, I think. We're going to take. Invitation in the long term motion.
You want to take the. What is, what's the, number two, what's the final wording of?
That one's, that one's correct.
This one is, okay. Any disturbance to any part of the stone walls located along the subject area of Oak Street, which are not designated driveway shall be repaired to their original condition. I read that, I'd say that that covers any stone walls along the entire area.
Through the chair, you need that whole motion.
So back to the. Up to the chair, if he feels he has unanimous dissent without a motion, I'll just reflect that, relay that to the.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll entertain a motion if there's one out there.
Is that a yes or a no?
Well, we'll take a motion and a vote to.
I'll make a motion if you report back to the selectmen, now we have no problem changing up the location of the pole because of wire, I don't know here.
I'll second. I'll second that. Motion by Mr. Marks, anyone else disagree, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Cause I'm back.
All right.
Item C, five C, Stonegate Development. I had project completeness on here, because I was anticipating a receipt of a letter from the attorney asking for the board to vote on project completeness, but that did not come in time, so.
Which one, Stonegate?
That's the same one we talked about for the road acceptance.
Okay. I know that's a street name, but I know that it's about.
There's a form for it where we would have to sign, but it didn't come in time.
Okay.
Cause Whiting Storm.
Thought you guessed. So, I, I went out to Whiting Reserve, Whiting Reservoir Estates during the storm on Tuesday, and it's a lot of junk out there. And before I get into stormwater, there was just scrap. The dumpster overflowing. There's wood and supplies sitting in the driveway getting soaked. And then at the end of the cul-de-sac, it's just a giant pile of stuff.
Where is this?
And if I didn't, if I didn't know any better.
Whiting Reservoir.
Oh, Whiting Reservoir. If I didn't know any better, it was left there to stay. But I, but I know they're using these things, it's just, it's not organized, and it didn't really, as in ice war. The stormwater on the road, as we know, and some of us are, but for those who, that don't, the catch basins are already raised to the finished elevation as if the top course is on the road. So the stormwater's running right by it in a lot of cases. Some of them, some of them are catching still, some of them are not. But there was a big pond at the end of the cul-de-sac. They was not gonna drive, um, I believe it was breaching over the hill into the basin, so, um, I have some pictures, I, I, I didn't.
So not engaging the, uh, the storm drains, but just coming over the hill into the.
The good news is it's going towards the basin, it's not going towards the house, that is the low point.
Towards, so, man, through the chair, that's the magic word. Through the chair, we've brought in pictures before of the cuts and everything, there's blooming down through the bottom end. They're not doing a thing about it.
So, can I, through the chair, there's only a binding course to it.
That's right.
Yeah. So when the final, they're gonna bring it up, obviously, we'd imagine that it would have been affected, that they.
Correct.
When does that happen?
Go ahead.
No, but is there a schedule for that?
Once they finish their last house, they'll.
Yeah, what's the status of the houses over there?
Oh, yeah, that's, I don't have an answer to that. They're moving along. Last time I was there before Tuesday, they still hadn't put the last two houses down on the left-hand side, but those are seriously done. I don't know if they're having, I don't think it's living there yet, but it looks like every house that's supposed to be built has at least a frame and a structure on it. So whatever, what's going on inside, they got it pretty close, so.
And we're still holding lots, through the chair, we're still holding lots too, right?
Oh, we're holding a pretty solid bond on that, to ninety thousand down there, so.
Are the catch basins even open? I mean, do they have the bags in them, or are they?
They're open. They're open, it's just bad. It's going right by them, because it's.
Cause they're two inches above the road, probably.
At least the rain that's hitting them above is going.
If we can't, through the chair, let me ask, should we request a gathering to find out why it's such a dump, as you say? I mean, I haven't been up there in a while, last time I was up there was because the catch basins, as you remember, were full, nothing was clean.
I visited a couple of times over the summer, and the developer that's in, and I was doing a much better job than the one that was there previously. But I haven't, I haven't been in for a while after, I should have taken a ride in after this last rainstorm to see what the effects were.
If there's people living there, it should be.
Right, people are living there, so it should be cleaned up.
Yeah. The good news, when I talk about the trash, and it might sound like I'm sensationalizing it, but it's not like there was trash blowing everywhere like tumbleweeds. It was, it was isolated in two particular areas. But, but it looked like some, like a structure fell down and collapsed.
So, through the chair, you couldn't use the cul-de-sac to turn around, is it?
There was enough space.
Oh, there was.
Yeah, that's right.
Through the chair, so whose responsibility is it, like, I know that the builders have certain requirements that they need to meet, but whose responsibility, other than yours, is it to drive these sites to make sure that they're aligned with what they should be?
Building Commissioner, their enforcement, their building grounds and such.
Cause I just think we've had, we've had other subdivisions, similar issues, and if we're gonna hold them to a certain standard, then we should hold all of them to a certain standard.
If I may, through the chair, a lot of times, like, as you know, what you do, we live down that way. Instead of going right home, sometimes I'll take a drive down, just take a mosey on through. And other developments, because we can go down, take a drive-through just to see for ourselves what's going on. And a lot of times, it's been members of the board that have been in these developments that have brought information or given medical and say, hey, you might want to check this, it's looking pretty bad, and then it goes from there. So, yeah, we can do it, do it.
I've been in since Sleepy Hollow, we had that public hearing, I, I've been in there.
Right.
Five times over the last week.
Even I've been in there once, I took a drive-up once just to make sure.
They've been, they've been cleaning that road every night, they sweep it.
So, yeah, we can do it.
So through the chair, what's the remedy for not performing to what the requirements are?
Mr. Chairman, the, the way to do that is to request their presence and ask them for an update. We, I, I'd request, I could provide them with some of the photos I took, ask them how they intend to remediate this and have them class something in the next meeting. And if for some reason they don't want to cooperate, we can use enforcement through the building commissioner.
Look, through the chair, I mean, we hold lots too, so if, if they come in for a lot of weeks, we can say, no, not we, you bring it up to where it's supposed to be.
And we have the bond too, we can say, you don't clean it up, we're gonna clean it up and.
Usually the bond's done if the developer goes building up or they need, and don't finish, that's where you sort the bond, but we have sure, like, fully watched, so they know you can't build on that lot until you get the rest of the project up to par.
And through the chair, and that's happened up there, we actually pulled lots back on it because it was so bad. We had released a bunch, and that was, no. And that's why now we have some back because of what's been going on. And we can do that too, say we release, on a project of six, you can release five, it's not going right, cut it back to three, or whatever.
Through the chair, Matt, when did you go in there?
Tuesday, Tuesday morning about ten AM.
Yesterday?
Tuesday, Tuesday.
During, during the rain.
Aye.
And that was after all the rain?
That was during.
They had to clean up or anything to go on?
I hadn't seen it since, since it was pouring, so maybe they cleaned it up, but it's, it's worth asking them for an update of the project anyway.
Yeah, we would see them in a lot of.
Through the chair.
They could be watching.
That's true. That's possible.
Power telephone.
Any other, uh, development updates?
Would the board like me to request the presence of the developer next meeting? Or at least another.
If I may, through the chair, after Ernie takes a drive-through, if he gives you a shout to any status.
Yeah, and the curious to see if they cleaned up at the.
If they have it all cleaned out, so it's a storm, then it'd be a deal where, okay, we're good.
Okay.
But if he takes a drive-through and it's what you saw, then definitely.
We'll, uh, give Ernie the grace to, uh, make that decision.
If I, if I see, if I see the problem, I'll contact him.
Okay, yeah, I think that's fair.
Fair enough. See the crossing, what did there, we had them post a bond recently, it's done, it was completed. I heard that Gobor Court extension is, is slowing, is, is not moving as fast as it wanted to, uh, it's economically based, but I know that they're still, uh, still working on that project, but not much of an update there. So, stormwater, same thing, Sleepy Hollow, and this is more questions through the chair to Mr. Marks, I was out there Tuesday, it didn't look too good.
And if you've been out there more recently, was it swept?
Which one?
Sleepy Hollow.
I'm sorry?
Sleepy Hollow.
Sleepy Hollow?
Yeah.
I was up there today, and, yeah, the road was all clean when I went through, uh, uh, four, three.
That's impressive, because on Tuesday.
Yeah, well, that was great, yeah. I mean, they're working that site still, so it's, it's a mess during the day when they're trucking in and out, but, um, at the end of the day, every day that I've gone in, they, they're up there cleaning it all up, the road's clean.
That's good.
I saw, uh, I, Mr. Chairman, I saw Annie Leonard, uh, today briefly, but, um, I did receive an email from him, I think they're gonna get started on installing some of the granite. And he asked if we would need to engage our consultant to witness some of that, do inspections, and that might be coming in the next couple of weeks, so that, that's still a piece of the project that's proceeding. Our draft decision for our earth removal permit that is still under works, I did provide it to the, um, applicant's attorney and town council, and we're still working on finalizing that. I know we signed signature pages at our last meeting, but I'm not putting it any together till we see it again and all parties are happy, just keeping you updated on that. There is. Okay. I wasn't sure if I was gonna talk about this or not. Um, and speaking of what's still under, there are, some of the butters don't want the fence that we agreed on at the meeting. Now, we can't change it now, okay? I think Mrs. Zwicker had a great recommendation, make sure they use double poles, if for some reason that they wanted to take it down behind that house, great, but I think for fall safety and the building commissioner, I think they should install it, and if it decides to move after that, yeah.
Right.
But the movement, if it came to the chair, the movement of that fence could only be performed by the homeowner of that property, not by the buyer.
Uh, correct. For mutual understanding.
Yeah, okay.
Right, of course.
But which, excuse me, through the chair. Is it being built on the developer's land?
Yeah.
How can the homeowner?
The homeowner of that land, not the butter of it.
And through the chair, that's why I brought up, at first he was gonna have one continuous fence.
Right.
This is mine, that's yours.
No, I like.
And that's why I said you need to make where each, each house, it's their own fence, so if I buy it and I don't put up a weight-bearing fence, I can take that down, put it up. Or if I don't want a fence, I mean, it's my house, it's all my.
That's, that's why we did it, that's right.
That's why we did it that way.
So there might be some preferential changes, Mr. Chairman, uh, from the butters' perspectives through agreements with the developer, and if once I hear those being finalized, I'll show them. But it's nothing that's gonna change our decision, because we voted here and closed. We have to render our decision based on the conditions we all agreed on and voted on.
Sorry, can I ask the other chair? So if, if they are, if the fence gets put up the way that it was voted on, and the homeowner in Sleepy Hollow wants to remove that fence, do they have to put up something else? So if they don't, then where does the liability lie?
With them.
With, if, for the butter, if something happens, child falls off, whatever, um, the liability lies with Sleepy Hollow homeowner?
Yeah.
The individual property owner.
Yeah, individual property owner.
Yeah, so that, I think that just needs to be really clear to them that they want to take that fence down.
Absolutely.
If I can, through the chair, yeah, it'd be like buying a house, wherever you buy it, and say that they have a fence up for a dog. I don't have a dog, I'm gonna take the fence out. It's my fence, it's the same thing, we're making them put it up during construction, and mandate it, there's gonna be a fence. But once they sell that house to Mr. Jones, it's now Mr. Jones' property and not the property of the developer.
But then that homeowner takes on a big risk of taking that down, it's a safety barrier.
Cause it's a.
They don't want it anymore, and it falls down, that's, it's.
That's their call, correct.
Responsibility, and that's outside of us too.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying it should be our responsibility, but I'm just saying, let's, I, I would want really clear with those homeowners, that if you take that fence down, it's a safety issue. It's like, so I get the pet analogy, but, but this is a very steep hill, but, you know.
I mean, good way to, first start off, uh, getting into the neighborhood though.
Unless you wanna go sliding in the wintertime, then you don't want that fence.
But it's the opposite, but it's uphill, I mean, it's, it's likely no one would remove the fence, because there's nothing to their advantage to remove the fence. Other than to maybe put a fence that's opaque, you know, you can't see through.
Can't see through, yeah.
So the Sleepy Hollow people are saying they don't want the fence?
No, it's the butters.
The butters don't want the fence.
Don't want them, yes.
Okay.
Totally.
No, it's, they're not, we passed it, then the fence goes up, that's the end of the story.
As far as the other, as far as the other butters go, there's still negotiations going, but our decision's gonna be printed as we have it. I just wanted to let you know there's things going on, but nothing.
That's between those forums.
Right, right, I think so too. But I'm glad to hear that they swept that streak, because, okay, it was cleaned up today when I went through. All right. They will end up having to dig out their detention bases too, because they were brown. Just floated with silt, and at some point, when they get ready to turn this stuff over to us, they're gonna have to bring that back to its original.
Yeah, that was gonna be, that would come before screening, so.
Just like lakes.
Right. Down the list, I don't have any updates on Jake. For Kay, Nathan Davis, um, does, was requested, and I continue to provide updates here. I was told by the, uh, owner, manager, Ms. Matson, uh, that she has got the CADs from her original engineer and provided them to the new engineer that she'll be hiring, which would be Mark Allen, that's a name we should be all familiar with, he's time on projects for the opponents here. So, um, that's the latest update, is that she has, and sometimes, I've seen, and I'm not going to bet for anyone particularly, but I've seen in other cases, we're getting CADs from middle engineer so that they can hire someone else, sometimes they don't do that. But, uh, then in this case, they were able to accomplish that, so, that, that, those are encouraging signs.
As long as they're paid in full, is my concern.
So that, uh, that's the latest update, I don't have much else there.
Sorry, one last question to the chair, do you, what is the protocol for me to provide you with updates on Jake? Recusing myself from this table and just saying, just so I know what I should be doing for you, and I want to give you what, you know, whatever you would like to receive. Something in an email, or, uh, I, I have no idea.
Tough to answer right now, given your position as a member.
Well, I think it would, if there's concerns, we would, uh, start, the board would ask and like, start asking for updates, right? If there's not been concerns of a project.
The reason it's on here is just one of our approved projects.
Sure, no, and, and I'm, I'm happy to provide in whatever format you want, so that you can put it in the package of, of.
I think a lot of these, that we get developments for, we've had issues and we've asked for updates. And, uh, I'll leave this one in, and he asked for.
And if I can, through the chair, there's a lot of times where we don't hear from him, because everything, he, they report to Matt, T's across, I's are dotted, and everything just goes right along. It's only when something comes up.
Right.
Or continual of an issue, then it gets pretty much every meeting that's getting handled on.
Yeah, through the chair, usually subdivision's, we, we send our final decision, that we want monthly updates and stuff like that, if it, if it wasn't, I don't know if it was in here.
I'll, I'll go back and look.
If it wasn't, it'd be nice to hear from you, but if there wasn't, then you don't have, unless it goes wrong.
Yeah, I, there's not much to report right now, but I can provide updates of whatever is in the decision.
I don't feel like you need to anymore yet. I'll tell you guys good stuff.
And like, through the chair, like Matt says, on some of these, no update, everything's good, or you'll just say, yeah, we're, we're good.
Smooth sailing, smooth sailing. This isn't on the agenda, but right before we started, um, this meeting, um, Mrs. Zwicker, you pointed out some signage on West Street. Solar project.
Solar project.
And, um, the West Street Solar Project has some signage that's across the street, this is no parking, because they want to.
They still have the no parking signs, through the chair, and one of them's almost ready to fall down.
Yeah, well, it was falling over.
They're, they're done building in there.
Yeah, you can, I could, I could take those signs down now, that was just.
At least I would think, I, I don't know protocol, that's why I'm just checking on it.
They, they are, they, they belong to them, wasn't it?
Right, exactly. And on one of them, the vines are pretty much to the sign, they'll be covering it before too long.
It'll hold it up.
Well, no, it's yellow.
One's laying, one's almost laying down.
One's almost, yeah, it is.
So we just get them out of there.
For next meeting. Their ongoing development or staff update for, uh, West Street?
I think so, I, I want to find out where their project completeness is, if they submit aspills, I don't know if that's been done, because I wasn't, it's a name for that one, so, I'll, I'll get an update on that.
We appreciate that too. And do you want, do you need a motion or anything through us to take the signs down, or just a consensus?
Let's, let's get some information first, and if we find out that the project's done, and it's just gonna, and you don't think they're necessary, we'll make that call.
Or they'll disappear by somewhere.
Well, through the chair, that was mostly in the beginning, when they were starting to make the road.
Yeah.
We didn't want cars lining up on the street, but now they got to act its way, the road.
Is there truck entering signs still?
Temporary construction signs.
There's something, any other signs there?
I see the, further in the big sign for the solar.
Yeah, I haven't been up that west, that, that part of West Street, but I think it's just two no parking.
Yeah, it's just a no, yeah, the no parking signs, still left.
Mr. Chairman, I said from those, we have some vouchers and a signature folder, but I, I don't have any more updates, is that minutes?
I don't know where it's down, those. Yeah.
Some of those were holding off.
Uh, minutes. Because one of them were holding off until they got the twenty-nine number.
I'll push that.
Minutes. Minutes, I have one in the packet for, uh, July twenty-eighth.
Yeah, there's one in the packet.
Yeah, there's one in the packet, but I haven't read it yet.
Okay.
Next time.
Next down on for, next time. Any other uh? Uh missing news, minutes, next meeting is September twenty-second? Alright, let there attain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Made by Mr. Wick, your second on Mr. Soffr, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, adjourned.